Praise and the Blessed Police.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I afford you roll call? I'd like to look for a motion to excuse Jim and Mike for tonight.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Now we're good for roll call.
All right. Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle is absent. Councilmember Barkus.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'll look for approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
You want a roll call? Okay, Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor DeBoer is absent. Councilmember Salzweedle is absent. Councilmember Barkus.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes. Citizens, discussion for items not on the agenda.
Perry Beecham, I reside at 924 Riverside Drive. We had coffee with council on Saturday, starting back up. It was a great, we had three council members there. It was a great time. Many great discussions took place. Out of that, the one thing I would say to the citizens and to the council, I certainly, the river situation, I would certainly would hope, my hopes is that the city would take the lead and figure out a solution for that. I went by, had to go into Grand Rapids today and went by the Thorn Apple and you could, so it's not just here, but I mean, you looked like you could actually walk across the water. It was so thick. And again, would not want it to be here. I, my understanding is the DDA would consider helping out, and I know that they can only go monetarily, they can only from the Bolt Launch down to Main Street. But again, the Lowell Community Fund grants are coming up. I just would like to see the city take the lead. And if the city doesn't have the money, which I think, I think the city should participate in it financially, but I certainly would like to see the city take the lead and write a grant to the Lowell Area Community Fund and look at going for $20,000 so you could get two years. I've talked to Rich and again, it was suggested not to do anything till the spring. Talking with him, yes, it dies off, but the root system is just, the longer that we wait, the harder it's going to be to eradicate it. So that's, that's my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Perry. Anybody else?
Just a quick update. I believe the week of July 15th, we placed the, we placed a temporary barricade on Riverside Elm. I, from what staff is seeing at this point, with I've determined, I heard, it's worked out so far, so good. Obviously, we have construction in Maine and Washington, which might be an issue, and school hasn't started yet. So those are going to be things that, once those things come up, they'll have to continue to evaluate. The, the, one thing is I actually had a couple residents actually come and thank us for doing a good job of this. They're very pleased with it. Normally, people come to City Hall hotels and go, "Good job." So I'll take that whenever I can. But the, it's, from what I understand, it's been pretty positive so far, so that's all I have.
Okay.
Rob Newman, 928 Riverside Drive. The road diversion, I am very happy with the amount of cars that have driven by my houses, gone down dramatically. Still get a few crazy people driving nuts, but been a lot better. So, the other thing I'd like to address in old business is partly something Perry a little bit when I spoke the last time. When people were here talking about the river, somebody, one of the council members said, "That's not a problem." And that really struck me wrong. I believe that river is part of your problem. It's part of our, all of our problem. And we definitely need to fix that. If you go down there, I don't think you kayak, but if you did, you go down there and go, "Wow, the smell is atrocious. It's so thick you came with you." So, and on Riverside Drive too, I still am very kind of concerned and don't understand why you want to try and make your infrastructure better, but yet you're only going to do through the 800 block of Riverside Drive. And that's very confusing to me.
Well, we're paving all of Riverside Drive.
Correct.
The issue, the issue is, we were planning on looping a water line. You, everyone has water service there. We were planning this before we found out what the issues were with the water fund when we had to raise rates like we did. So, we had submitted a grant to Kent County to try and get that part funded through the grant project. So we didn't get the grant, so I had to move things around to get the road project on the 25, 26 budget. The issue is, the water line, to loop that water line, which there's already service there, it's $190,000 if you include engineering. So if we do that, and if the council wants to do that, that's fine. Next year, the rate, right now, the projected rate increase is 9.16% over the next five years. Just to do that project, it's either, it's a 25, it's almost a 25% rate next year, just to cover that one segment. And to, if we spread it over the five years, let me did the rest, that 9.16 goes to over 12%. So it's really cost. I had another project that had, we had a similar situation with the water in the sewer line on Kent Street. I wanted to do the same thing there. I can't do it. So I had to pull the project. Otherwise, we're going to have to raise rates much more higher than we have to. And then on top of it, we still have an issue with the water and the wastewater plant expansion that we don't know yet. So, those projects, they're not deteriorating sewer lines, because if there was a deteriorating sewer line, we would do what we have to do, replace it. Because you don't pave a road, you don't pave a road, and then leave a deteriorating water sewer line to rip it out five years from there. As a matter of fact, they're doing that on Washington right now. They paved Washington before I came to town and didn't address any of the utilities, so that nice road got ripped out. That's what we're trying to avoid. So that's the reason why. Also, we have another project, Division A group. Right now, we have money, our cash on hand that we didn't raise rates for, it's like $200,000 to extend water line down there. The council's going to have to decide whether they want to do that, because it is kind of an equity issue. It's the same situation. It's very scattered lines. It's, this city was built years and years ago, and that's how they did it. But the fact of the matter is, I'm being told they don't want us raising rates more than we have to. And these are projects that they're there, I mean, they're, they would be nice to have. I totally agree. But I cannot recommend them, because I, we don't have the money for it. If we don't have the money for something, I can't do it.
Do you have to go into the state to apply for any grants?
We have, but we're not going to get anything. Because
Be sure of that.
I'm willing to bet my paycheck on that, yes.
I'm doing more research on that myself.
And if there are grants, I'm happy to. But understand, we take care of our, we take care of our bills and maintain our system. So we tend to get not looked at. So that's, but if there's grants available, I'm glad to do it. But I put on, I put in a bunch of grants in the last three months on a number of projects. We may get some, we may not. I can't guarantee it. But the issue too, is that it literally services eight residents. So that was the reason why Kent County didn't approve the grant, because it only serviced eight residents. So that's the issue.
So the thing that bothered me was, the way it was explained in your reply to all that, was it was an upgrade. And I thought, well, you're going to upgrade them, correct? You're putting new water and sewer lines in there?
Or replacing.
Okay. Exactly.
Right.
And are you going to change the size of their water and sewer lines?
We upgraded the size of the, of the lines on Main and Road in Washington, yeah.
So are you going to do that on Riverside?
There's no line on Riverside of the area we're looking at.
There's a water line up to the eighth block.
There is no water line between Foreman and Hough. That's where we were looking. There's no water line.
Correct.
That's where we were looking to put the line.
Correct.
There's nothing there. We're not doing anything with the other water lines, because at this point in time, nothing has been indicated to us that we need to.
And you have definite documentation that says there is no problem with that tile?
So we had, we had a, we had a water asset management study done in 2017, and there was no indication of any issues. We had a saw grant done back in, for the stormwater and the sanitary sewer, there were no issues. The issues that have been addressed are in our capital plan. That's what we're looking to move forward to.
Okay. So when they sucked all that gravel out of the pipe down by the 800 block of Riverside, that was just in there?
I, I don't know what you're referring to.
I watched it with my eyes. I saw.
I don't know what you're, I don't know. There was a project on Foreman Street, there was a project on Foreman Street that we did, that we had a sewer interceptor project that we replaced the sewer line, that we replaced the sewer line because it was basically an infiltration and inflow problem with the wastewater treatment plant. So we fixed that project, problem. We fixed that problem, I want to say, in 2020. That's the only one I know.
It was within the last 18 months I watched them suck gravel out of that manhole cover plate.
And that may have happened. I don't know anything about it. My staff, trust me, my staff would tell me if there's a problem with a line that we need to address, they're pretty hopeful about it.
Are you able to check with your staff?
I'll be happy to.
Show me that. I'd love to know that.
I'll leave, I don't know if there's documentation, but I'll be happy to talk to Ralph Breckin, our utility supervisor. He pretty much knows the system in and out. I'll be glad to.
Okay. I still think it's not a correct thing to do. You're talking about infrastructure and taking care of things that the past council's done.
I respect your opinion. Thank you for sharing.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
On that subject, when you, when you mentioned that it's, that the water lines are adequate, they're, I'm just, there are, and they're not, they're not home right now, but there's several residents over the past that the city has told them, just keep your faucets running, because the water, because we're hooked into Hudson, water line's on the other side of Hudson. And as you, as more vehicles in a super cold winter or whatever, it drives the frost down. And they've had to run their faucets in order to keep their water on. And so I would argue that there, it's only eight people, but there are people on that that the water services doesn't suffice. The other is, does it, does it, funding strict to do that, funding strictly has to come from the water?
Should. You should be funding, you should be funding, it's like, we don't fund general fund, we don't give general fund for projects for electric funds. I mean, it's the same, it's the same philosophy.
Well, I'm just asking, because, because I understand later you're going, that some of the projects that you have came in way under budget and
Yeah.
So instead of using that money for
That money has to be used for local streets. It can't be transferred to the utility.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to new business.
I think you have one more.
My name is Casey Catlin. I live at 956 Riverside. You say that we have adequate water there?
There's water there. There's service, yes.
Okay. But do you call when you flush your toilet that your faucet goes to a trickle? That's adequate?
I know.
Does that do that at your house?
Okay. You don't, we're not going to
PC, we're not going to do that.
I technically am doing a courtesy by answering the question.
Yep.
Okay. How about my water line runs underneath my neighbor's garage. Who's responsible for that from Hudson to my house? Am I?
Letter of lines are responsible of the property owner or the city owners.
So it runs under her property. Who's responsible for that? Me or her?
The property owner. Unfortunately, that was designed many, many years ago. I didn't draft it, but that's
Right. But you can't take care of it?
We don't take care of letter of lines in the city, other than lead line removal, which we're mandated by law to do. And we have 20 years to do our
Okay. Moving on to new business.
Uh, 2024 street projects, Mike. As part of the 2024 street project, we need to, oh, that's, that's second. We have two actions. We have the proposal, then we have the construction. On July 16th, the city opened builds to mill, mill and resurfaced the following streets. Lafayette Sherman from Monroe to Washington, Grant from Lafayette to Washington, Pine from Lafayette to Monroe, Marsack from Lafayette to Monroe, North from Lafayette to Jefferson, King from Washington to Jefferson, High from Monroe to Jefferson, Ottawa from Brook to Hudson. That's a DDA funded project. The low bid was from Michigan Paving, which has completed several projects for the city in the past. The bid amount for these streets was $747,357.50. The bid information is attached. The engineer's estimate for this construction was $1,150, or $150,000. The city budgeted $1,211,483 for this work from a local street fund. The Downtown Development Authority has budgeted approximately $192,000 for Ottawa. Of the amount of the low bid, $105,000 is allocated for Ottawa and the DDA. With a significant budget savings, I asked the city engineer to seek pricing from the low bidder from the following additional streets. Maple, Maple Street, High Street from Jefferson to the dead end east of Division, King Street from Washington to Jackson. The original segment for King was not included in the original street, in the original bid specifications. Michigan Paving quoted an additional $372,756.50 for this work. This would bring the total construction cost to $1,015,114, which is approximately $196,000 less than budgeted. As part of the bid, the Department of Public Works requested to remove pavement buildings to help fill some gravel lots at Recreation and Stony Lakeside Park. For all the streets, Michigan Paving offered to provide the material to us for $23,017. The city would like to purchase $17,300 of these milling, milling, which is for the original bid. We believe 75% of these milling will be used for recreational park. Since that park isn't the DDA, we would ask the DDA to pay for that portion. The remainder can be paid for under my spending authority. I recommend that the Lowell City Council approve the bid with Michigan Paving to compete all of the late streets listed above at a cost not to exceed $1,015,114, which is paid, which is to be paid from the local street fund. So we're getting great bid pricing, and we can knock out more streets. North and Jackson will be coming to you as of, as of next year, or it's already budgeted for current this year, so we'll bring in 25. You know, like I say, we continue to say, we've done more streets in the last four years than we did 50 years prior, so.
No, I like the fact that they're, they're a good contractor. They like to work with us. And again, we know eventually the Carolina money's going to go down. Where we can get hammered down right now, I think the better off we are to get moving along. So, anybody have any questions for Mike?
Michigan Paving must resell those milling, and instead of getting it for free, they must, there must be a market there to do that?
Yeah. Normally, you have to, where you have that, you normally have to buy it back. That's not our company.
And then one of the streets that you're adding is in Snyder Manor. Is, are those streets Maple?
Maple's not in Snyder. It's Brook that is. But we're, when we do Brook, well, we have to come back. We're seeking grant funding for Brook. But we have that bridge work. That's why we originally planned to do it this year, but the bridge, the bridge issue delayed it. So we're only going to where the, to where the private drive. There's a point where the private dive connects, we won't be paving on the private drive, just the public.
That's one of the two bridges that we're dealing with, right?
Yeah, Stat and the Chatham Bridge.
Yep. You got questions?
Any?
Yeah. We have no more questions for Mike. I'll look for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Motion in a second. Sue.
Okay. Councilmember Barkus.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
B, used equipment purchase, Rich.
Okay. Well, the DPW has given an opportunity to look at a used parking lot sweeper, this per se, or pro se asphalt. I mean, it's a Lowell, and it's a 2001 Mitsubishi Huso. I assume I pronounced that correct. Compact sweeper designed for sweeping parking lots, but has very use potential for the city. DPW staff were allowed to evaluate the condition and performance of that equipment. And we've determined the equipment is in very good condition. We've attached some photos for you to look at as well. The asking price for that sweeper is $7,000. And just on our look over it, it needs about $6,000 in repair. It is currently operational and has been tested at a variety of locations by Stat with excellent results, considering the asking price, the age and condition. And staff's considered this a good potential purchase. We're asking City Council to consider that purchase. We've put in a few comparables for you as well. So there's a 2001 Mitsubishi and 1981 Mitsubishi, or 99 Mitsubishi, all Husos, ranging in mileage from 20,000 to 130,000 miles, roughly $15,000 to $28,000 is the asking price for those. We've estimated the cost to purchase a brand new parking lot sweeper here on $150,000. But we understand that's not a viable option. So we'll be on this used one. We thought it was a good value. With good maintenance practices, staff estimate the city can get up to 10 years of use out of this piece of equipment. And we already have skilled operators on staff. Funds are available in the equipment fund to make that purchase and the repairs. It is worth noting that the purchase of the sweeper will not absolve us of contracting for sweeping services citywide, because it is a small sweeper, it can't handle the entire city. But it is a valuable tool for our equipment pool, because it will increase the efficiency of our activity staff. And we give you an example here in the communication. Water may break. Cleanup process currently requires use of three pieces of equipment that a minimum of two staff operate had equipment. The sweeper and one staff person can replace that operation. And then also maintaining our parking lots also reduces the expense of cleaning straw catch bases. Disposal of the sweepings, which was a concern of mine, can be managed by our current waste holler. The road sweepings must be disposed of in an appropriate landfill capable of receiving sweeping debris and the associated contaminants that are inherent to the debris. And then below is a list of the areas where we think that we can use, excuse me, utilize that piece of equipment. They're listed in all the municipal lots, the parks, specific projects, cemetery streets, and then we can use that also for special events and festivals. And then possibly sweeping the downtown, just to keep it a little longer. But again, with the caveat that you can't sweep the entire city with that little sweeper. So I'm recommending the City Council approve the purchase of the Mitsubishi parking lot sweeper for pro se asphalt for an amount not to exceed $7,000. And then further in your packet are photos, some comparable equipment quotes, and then a little write-up on what is parking lot sweeping, so we'll find and read it.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Any questions for Rich? I have one, Rich. So, the repairs, is that something that needs to be done ASAP, or is that stuff that can happen over a period of time, right? In other words, I seen it running the day we got it, and it was coming up Main Street the wrong way. So it only sweeps the one side?
Correct.
Okay. That would explain the
Yeah.
headlight.
You have to go get your truck.
Three o'clock in the morning. I was a little concerned.
Yeah. But you are correct. The repairs can be spread over some times. We know there's maybe a fuel injector issue that was identified, one of the, one of the injectors, but we can fix that. It seemed like it was running fine when we were testing it. We tested it several times. It seems like it's working good.
And we have storage to keep it inside, right? And put it in?
We can squeeze it in the, in the back of the Ford somewhere.
Okay.
More license, please.
Okay. Does, does anybody want it all inside?
Yes. If you're driven by our lot, likely using
Yes, it's empty.
A lot of cleanup back there.
Yes. Okay. So if we don't have any more questions, I'm good with the answer. I'll look for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Sue.
Councilmember Barkus.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
All right. MML Annual Conference Delegate.
The annual meeting, September 13th, Grand Hotel.
Yep.
We need to have a delegate.
Yep. So in the past, it's always been Mike. Last year, I'm an agency, and I don't think I'll do that again. But, and I know you're not going, right? So I would, I would like to just have Mike continue on doing it. He's done it forever. So if you're good with that, I'll take a vote on that.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
I also support your motion.
Okay. We're going to get there, won't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Sue, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Council, and Councilmember Barkus.
Yes.
All right. We got up here. Go ahead, Mike.
We do need to go back and ensure the construction engineering for, for the streets.
Okay.
So
That was
Yeah, that'd be item B. Well, they'd be tied with 24.
Yeah.
I
It was actually
The, 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 the memo got mixed up, so.
There was two motions.
Yeah, there were two items.
New business.
Yep. Well, in my packet, it was the street projects were before the
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, the memo was placed wrong.
Okay.
So as part of the 2024 street project, we need to approve construction engineering for all of the work. Williams &amp; Works provided an estimate with the scope in the packet. They also provided a separate one for the DDA for Ottawa. The total cost is $55,800, and there's funds budgeted for this. I'm recommending whole city council approve the constru, construction engineering for Williams &amp; Works for work, being funded by the local street fund, a cost not to exceed $55,800.
Okay. Any questions for Mike on that one? If done, I'll look for a motion.
I'll support.
With that, Sue, roll call.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkus.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right. We got up here. There we go. Item D, MERS Annual Meeting Officer Delegate.
Yeah. So this is our annual, the annual MERS meeting, the year we held at the NY in Grand Rapids. As we do every year, the council needs to appoint an employer and employee delegate. This year, we, Chief Hurst plans to attend and represent the employer, and Julie Stewart from Light and Power would be delegated to represent the city employees. So I'm recommending that the whole city council approve Chief Hurst as the employee, employer delegate, and Julie Stewart as the employee delegate.
Any questions for Mike on that one? If not, I will entertain any motion.
I'll support. He has to make a motion.
Support. Thank you.
He can make a motion, you know.
Ah, no. We're doing this, you have to don't do that.
Councilmember Barkus.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Okay. Board and comment, prepared forward, information reports. Perry.
I've had nothing new since the last one.
Yeah, we were in October, so nothing new, yeah.
Yeah, Mike's next week, so we're moving forward. All right, Vanage, forward, Michael.
So a couple things. The construction on Broadway Street this morning. So a few months back, Consumers did submit a runaway request, permit to install gas line in that area between, I believe from Main Street to Chatham. Then we were granted that request. So they planned, they started doing the work. I noticed yesterday that they were putting barricades up. They never bothered to notify the city, any of the property owners adjacent to the property, or anyone on the project, and they just went and started the project today. So I noticed it when I drove by this morning, taking my Sunday daycare, and nobody from the city was notified. So I did contact the Government Affairs Representative from Consumers and share with him my frustration for the fact of no communication. We had businesses that were impacted by it today. The post office was impacted by it today. It was completely unacceptable. So I did address that. And I do know that they plan on doing the work through the week. They should be wrapped up by the end of the week. As, as has been noted, there is a special meeting with Lowell Township Board of Trustees on Wednesday at 7:00 PM at Lowell Township to discuss the letter of under on Wednesday at 7:00 PM at Lowell Township to discuss the letter of understanding for the potential for a 425 agreement with Lowell Township for the development out at 996 and Almond Nash. There will be open, there will be an open house here on Tuesday, October 20th between 6:00 to 8:00 and then October 21st at Lowell Township, same time, 6:00 to 8:00. And then from, from there, there'll be plans for public hearing and then later action later in the fall, if you want to go forward with it. We'll discuss more in detail in the meeting as to what, what it entails. Since the last meeting, Devera Drive, that, that area was paved. If you recall, a few months back, Tyler Kent had suggested the city seek assistance through the technical assistance center to seek grant funding. It is, it is not for utility projects. Everything I've seen is tied towards roadway transportation, things of that nature. But I did seek requests to see if they can help us get funding for the James Street project. Currently, the James Street project is slated for 2026, 27. That'll be a massive, well, it'll be a street construction project, but there is quite a bit of interesting storm store in that area, so archaic storm sensor system. So we are seeing if we can get funding for that. And I'm also seeking funding for the bridges on Brook Street and Devera to see if they can help us seek anything. I have yet to hear back from them, but I hope to hear something here in the next couple of weeks and that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Mike on that? If not, appointments. We do have some appointments open. Already been shot down by somebody sitting in the front row, but if you'd like to, zoning board of appeal, or Campfield resigned. There's two of us. We met once in 11 years. So it's not like a all the time thing. Downtown Development, Martha Davis, she resigned. Our downtown development, that's very important to this city. I would highly hope that somebody will step up and take that position. You don't necessarily have to be a business owner. I think Martha was in there on, is, or no, I guess she was in there as a business owner.
Yeah, she was a business owner.
And Lowell Area Housing, Jim Hodges, we need to reach out to him and the planning commission Monday night. I will confirm with Nicole that she wants to continue on. She just got elected on, so I don't see why she wouldn't.
And do you know when the downtown development, what time that was meeting?
At noon on the first Thursday after the first Monday of the month.
Did you just say?
That's how it starts. So if you have a council meeting on a Monday, the first Monday, then it's the, that Thursday.
Okay. And what about the Lowell Area Housing?
I don't, that's a, I believe that's a, our representation to Schneider Manor, I don't know when that one is.
Okay.
You want to volunteer to vote?
No, but perhaps I have some people tonight.
Appreciate it. With that, appointments, we'll move on to council comments. Eric.
I just want to thank Rich's team for the barricade work on Riverside. That turned out way more professional than I could even imagine. That area is so much calmer. It's instantaneously peaceful. That parking lot, Sabour, people are crossing the streets safely. I just thank you to your team. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. My comments are going to be, as a council, we directed Mike to seek funding for everything that we can. And Mike's done a very good job after we've told him this is the direction we want to go to, to try to get funding. It takes a lot of time and we get shot down 99% of the time because we're too, what's we're done with for Mike? Too well off.
It's a fair word.
Right? We're not, we're not a poor community and we don't qualify for a lot of things because that's what a lot of these grants out there are for. So with that being said, please understand he does try constantly to find the funding to move on. Other thing, I can thank DPW. Saturday, it ran home quick, came back, had a water valve shut off cover bubbling up water like that old U must be in Jeff and I guess it's just the valve needs to be replaced, right?
I took care of all that because he couldn't reach me.
I don't want to take it in credit. Okay. But it seems like that if you're driving around and you see water going somewhere it shouldn't be, and as we all know, this is uneven watering, please call city hall and let us know they can get us relatively quick.
City hall, it's not, just call sheriff's dispatch.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll notify us.
Yep. And that's all I have. Eric, Jim's not here.
I have one. Mike, you had said October, because the email, it says August 20th for the city.
For the open house?